All right, good evening. Welcome to Glendale City Council Meeting of April 13, 2021. This meeting is called to order. Role attendance is not necessary. Everybody is present. You'd take note of that, please. Moving on, the next two items on our agenda are the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight will be started by Councilmember Tomachoff. The invocation will be delivered by Pastor Jeff Phyllis with the Turning Leaf Church of the Nazarene. Sir, if you would, if you take the podium. If everyone, please stand and join with me. And if you're a man and if it's appropriate, if you'd please remove your hat. And then when he's finished, if you'll remain standing for a pledge.
Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, thank you for being here with us tonight. We invite you into these proceedings. We're thankful that the decrease of COVID-19 cases and hospitalizations and deaths have been positive for Arizona. We're also grateful for accessible vaccines to protect us. Father, we realize that we are blessed to have a vaccine so available. Would you be with those in other places around the world where the vaccine is not as available? Keep them safe and well. Thank you also, Father, that Mayor Wires is recovering from his heart surgery. We ask you to continue your healing work in him as his health improves and as he gets back on his feet. May this council meeting tonight accomplish the best ideals for the city of Glendale. May we recognize our partnership with you to keep this city accessible, inviting, and safe. Would you bring wisdom, bring understanding and compassion to our city officials as they work hard on our behalf? May we always do our best for those who have no voice, who are marginalized and hurting. We pray all of this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Pastor. Okay, before we get started, I'd like to remind everyone of the following. This meeting is televised live on the City of Glendale's Facebook and YouTube pages as well as Glendale's Channel 11. Our meetings are located in the Glendale Civic Center, and our audience is seated next door. We do request that if you are sitting next door that you wear a face covering if you're unable to social distance. And for those of you who are seated next door, be aware that you have a large screen that allows you to see us. And but we also have a large screen where we can see you. So with that said, if you wish to speak on any item on the agenda, please complete a golden-colored card, give it to the officer in the room, and that'll be given to our clerk, and then in turn handed to me. If you've submitted a speaker card and indicated that you wish to speak on an agenda item, I'll announce your name and try to give you time ahead of time, but as you make your way to the podium in the room. We will be allowing three minutes for each speaker tonight on all of our agenda items. I would like everyone to please keep in mind the Citizens Comment section is at the end of the voting meeting and is allowed the public to speak about anything that's not on the agenda. And I do want to thank you all for your patience. Okay. Right now, I would like to take a point of personal privilege, and that's to both read and present a proclamation to the Water Services Department. In honor of April as Water Awareness Month, I'd like to invite Darnell Kirksey, Kirksky, I'm sorry, Kirk-Cee, and Kaylee Delcet. I'd also like to invite Ann Stehe and Joanne Toms with their water conservation team to please join me up here at the podium. Or we don't have a podium, but up here at the microphone. And then after I do that, then we're going to allow a couple folks to speak quickly. So. How you doing? Good. Good. Hi. Okay. Proclamation, City of Glendale, whereas water is one of Arizona's most precious natural resources and is vital to the economic vitality of our communities, and whereas the Glendale Water Services Department is committed to managing and planning to meet the water needs of its current and its future customers, and whereas the Glendale Water Services Department offers a comprehensive water conservation program to help residents and businesses conserve water, and whereas practicing a water-efficient lifestyle is a way each resident and business in Glendale can help ensure a sustainable water supply, and whereas proclaiming April as Water Awareness Month benefits the city or community by encouraging all citizens to be good stewards of Arizona's water resources. Now therefore, I, Jerry P. Wires, Mayor of the City of Glendale, Arizona, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim April 2021 as Water Awareness Month and encourage all our citizens to use water wisely and realize that well-being of our community depends on safe, reliable, and high-quality water supply. Signed by myself and our city clerk. Who gets this? There you go. One to speak. There you go.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for proclaiming April as Water Awareness Month, and thank you to our partner, the Sonoran Audubon Society, for accepting the proclamation. My name is Joanne Toms, and I am the Environmental Program Administrator for the City of Glendale. And since I was in high school, I've always wanted to work in the environment. High school was a long time ago, even though I still feel like a high schooler at times. So I'm so fortunate to work at the City of Glendale and really work my dream job. I'm really thrilled to have the Sonoran Audubon Society here tonight because conservation is truly a collaborative effort. So from birds to business, we all need a sustainable water supply. I'm also really blessed to work with Ann, who I call our resident naturalist, and then I'm also really privileged to work with Kaylee and Darnell, who care so much for the environment. So thank you all very much for this opportunity.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Kaylee Dulcet, and I'm sorry. Okay, thank you. I'm the Plants for Birds Coordinator at Sonoran Audubon Society. On behalf of Sonoran Audubon Society, I would like to thank the City of Glendale for inviting us to accept the proclamation. Water conservation is key to everyone's survival, and as we're all aware, water is a scarce resource here in the Sonoran Desert. So it is paramount that we conserve water as best as we are able for ourselves, but also for our beautiful, beautifully diverse Sonoran Desert ecosystem. With native plants and desert-adapted plants, we are able to reduce water significantly, and Sonoran Audubon Society is glad to partner with Glendale to conserve water while also helping our beautiful Arizona wildlife. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Just get a picture real quick. Turn that around. There you go. Come on in a little bit. How's that? So I have to tell you, all of that she just said was on about the size of a postage stamp. Little bitty tiny writing. Thank you so much. Thank you. Okay, with that, approval of the minutes. Next on the agenda is the consideration of the minutes from the March 23, 2020 voting meeting. Councilmembers, do you have any corrections or additions to the minutes? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve the March 23, 2020 voting meeting minutes?
Mayor, I move we approve the minutes of March 23, 2021 voting meeting.
Second.
We have a motion from the Vice Mayor and a second from Councilmember Tomachoff to approve the minutes. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Appears the ayes have it, do have it. Motion does carry. Consent agenda and consent resolutions will now move on to our consent agenda items two through 25. Items on the consent agenda are of routine nature, although they've been previously studied by the City Council at a workshop session. Now, they are intended to be acted upon in one motion by this council. Ms. Robine, would you please read the consent resolutions 16 through 25?
Item 16, Resolution Number R-21-16. A resolution of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of an intergovernmental agreement with the cities of Avondale, Buckeye, El Mirage, Goodyear, Peoria, Surprise, Tolleson, and the town of Wickenberg, establishing the West Valley Investigative Response Team to provide a pool of specialized officers who are available to assist in the investigation, documentation, evidence gathering, and related functions of a critical incident. Item 17, Resolution Number R-21-17. A resolution of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into Contract Amendment Number One to an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Phoenix, C-18-0452, for transit services in the City of Glendale. Item 18, Resolution Number R-21-18. A resolution of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into Contract Amendment Number One to an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Phoenix, FAIN Number AZ-2020-008, AZ-2020-009, and AZ-2019-038-00, for acceptance and expenditure of federal Transit Administration grant funding for transit services. Item 19, Resolution Number R-21-19. A resolution of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, approving and authorizing submission of the substantial Amendment One to the 2016-17, 2017-18, 2018-19, and 2019-20 annual action plans to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development in the combined amount of $456,381.93. Item 20, Resolution Number R-21-20. A resolution of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, approving and authorizing submission of the substantial Amendment One to the FY 2020-21 Annual Action Plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and acceptance of an award of $2,448,41 of community development block grant funds and $2,997,188 of emergency solutions grant program funds provided through the CARES Act. Item 21, Resolution Number R-21-21. A resolution of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, approving and authorizing submission of the City of Glendale's 2021 Community Housing Annual Public Housing Agency Plan, Form HUD-50075-ST, to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Item 22, Resolution Number R-21-22. A resolution of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, approving and authorizing submission of the City of Glendale's Community Housing 2021-2025 Capital Fund Program Five-Year Action Plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Item 23, Resolution Number R-21-23. A resolution of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing the city manager to execute and accept a property use license from Salt River Project Agricultural Improvement and Power District for roadway improvements between 83rd and 91st Avenues along Camelback Road. Item 24, Resolution Number R-21-24. A resolution of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of a development agreement for infrastructure with Newmark Homes LLC and Beaumont LLC. Item 25, Resolution Number R-21-25. A resolution of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing the support of the Bureau of Reclamation Water Smart Grants, Small-Scale Water Efficiency Projects Grant Application for the Landscape Irrigation Technology Incentive Project, and if funded, authorizing the acceptance and expenditure of the grant award in the approximate amount of $50,000.
Thank you. Do you have any speaker cards on any of the consent agenda items?
No, Mayor.
Very good. Councilmembers, any items that you'd like to hear separately? Well, now proceed with the action items which remain on the consent agenda. No items were polled. Can I get a motion?
Yes, Mayor. I move we pass and adopt consent agenda items two through 15 and consent resolutions 16 through 25.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Clark, a second from Councilmember Tomachoff to approve the recommended action items. Any questions for discussions? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Councilmember Eldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Microphone, sir.
Aye.
Thank you, Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the motion carries unanimously. Moving on to bids and contracts. Ms. Robine, would you introduce item 26, please?
Authorization to enter into a linking agreement with Don Sanderson Ford, Inc. for automotive services and maintenance.
Any speaker cards? Councilmembers, any questions? Hearing none. Can I get a motion to approve item 26?
Mayor.
Go ahead, sir.
I move that we approve item 26, authorization to enter into a linking agreement with Don Sanderson Ford.
Second. We have a motion from Councilmember Melner, a second from Councilmember Eldama to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Councilmember Eldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Mayor, I will explain my vote on this and nearly every other bid and contract offered tonight. This again is a five-year contract for customary and ordinary services, and I oppose that, so I will be voting nay.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the motion does carry. Ms. Robine, would you introduce item 27, please?
Authorization to enter into a linking agreement with Sands Motor Company for automotive services and maintenance.
Do you have any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember, any questions? Hearing none. Can I get a motion to approve item 27?
Mayor.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve item number 27, authorization to enter into a linking agreement with Sands Motor Company for automotive services and maintenance.
Second. We have a motion from Councilmember Eldama, a second from the Vice Mayor to approve the recommended action. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Councilmember Eldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Nay.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the motion carries. Ms. Robine, item 28, if you would.
Authorization to enter into Amendment Number One to the linking agreement with Restoration HQ LLC for emergency environmental remediation and restoration services.
Do you have any speaker cards? Be a no? Okay. Councilmember, any questions? Hearing none. Motion to approve item 28.
Yes, Mayor, I move we enter into Amendment Number One of the linking agreement with Restoration HQ LLC.
Second. Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember Tomachoff, a second from Councilmember Hugh to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Councilmember Eldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Nay.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the motion carries. Ms. Robine, item 29, if you would.
Authorization to enter into a professional services agreement with Arizona Training and Evaluation Center, Inc. for occupational training and temporary staffing services.
Do you have any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember, any questions? Hearing none. Can I get a motion to approve item 29?
Mayor.
Go ahead.
I move we authorize the city manager to enter into the described agreement with Arizona Training and Evaluation.
Second. I have a motion from Councilmember Turner, a second from Councilmember Clark and Hugh to approve the recommended action. We already got that. Roll call vote. Councilmember Eldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Nay.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the motion carries. Ms. Robine, would you introduce item 30, please?
Authorization to enter into an agency agreement with Leeds Online LLC for the continued use of the nationwide online investigation system.
Do you have any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember, any questions? Hearing none. Can I get a motion to approve item 30?
Mayor.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve item number 30, authorization to enter into an agreement, agency agreement with Leeds and LLC for the continued use of nationwide online investigation system.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Eldama, a second from Councilmember Tomachoff to approve the recommended action. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Councilmember Eldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Nay.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the motion carries. Ms. Robine, item 31, please.
Authorization to enter into a linking agreement with Informer Systems LLC for the continued use of Schedule Express Scheduling Solutions software.
Speaker card? Okay. Councilmember, any questions? Hearing none. Can I get a motion to approve 31, please?
Mayor.
Go ahead.
I move that we approve item number 31, authorization to enter into a linking agreement with Informer Systems LLC.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Melner, a second from Councilmember Tomachoff to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Councilmember Eldama, how would you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how would you vote?
Nay.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the motion carries. Ms. Robine, could you introduce item 32, please?
Authorization to enter into a linking agreement with Willdan Engineering, Inc. for plan review and inspection services.
Speaker cards? Okay, thank you. Councilmember, any questions? Hearing none. Can I get a motion to approve item 32?
Yes, I move we enter into the linking agreement with Willdan Engineering, Inc.
Second. We have a motion from Councilmember Tomachoff, a second from the Vice Mayor to approve the recommended action. Is there any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Councilmember Eldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the motion carries unanimously. Ms. Robine, would you introduce item 33?
Authorization to enter into a linking agreement with TW Associates, Inc., DBA, Misco Water for sledge removal parts.
Okay, speaker card? Okay. Any questions from the council? Hearing none. Can I get a motion to approve item 33?
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move we authorize the city manager to enter into the described agreement with TW Associates, Inc.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Turner, a second from Councilmember Tomachoff to approve the recommended action. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Councilmember Eldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Nay.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the motion carries. Ms. Robine, could you introduce item 34, please?
Authorization to enter into a linking agreement with Vertech Industrial Systems LLC for supervisory control and data acquisition, SCADA, professional engineering services.
I got to ask you before you say no.
No, Mayor.
Speaker cards? Councilmembers, any questions? Hearing none. Can I get a motion to approve 34, please?
Mayor.
Go ahead.
I move we authorize the city manager to enter into the described agreement with Vertech Industrial Systems LLC.
We have a motion from Councilmember Turner, a second from Councilmember Tomachoff to approve the recommended action. Is there any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. We'll conduct a roll call vote. Councilmember Eldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Nay.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the motion does carry. Public hearing, land development actions. Ms. Robine, can you introduce item 35?
Ordinance Number O-21-24. An ordinance of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, rezoning property located at 8778 North 67th Avenue from R4 multiple residence to R5 multiple residence, amending the zoning map, providing for an effective date, and directing the city clerk to record a certified copy of the ordinance.
Mayor, members of the council, here to provide staff report is Inter and Planning Director David Reckert. Mayor and members of council, it's a pleasure to be with you, and this first action on the agenda tonight was one that we put a little bit of extra steam behind, and I'll explain as we go along, but it was at some of your request to do this, and it was important from an infill standpoint to do that. This is Golden Lane Apartments, zoning case 2103. And as stated by the clerk, it's rezoning from R4 multiple residence to R5 multiple residence. It's the City of Glendale is the applicant on this, and it's a 1.9-acre parcel. You can see how close this is to City Hall. This is in the older part of the community, which has been developed for some time, and this piece of property is located west of 67th Avenue and southwest of Alice Intersection. The general plan, comparatively speaking, where City Hall is, it's a couple miles away from where we're sitting as we speak. The zoning map shows R4 zoning in this small portion of the property, and the R5 was approved some time ago, and they were trying to blend the two together. What happened was is that the R4 does not allow the same development standards, and financing and a few other things got, and timing got set up in a way that this needed to be moved ahead much more quickly than it would have intended to be. Here's an aerial photograph of the site and shows a combination of different housing types in this immediate area, and this lot looks like it's been vacant for some time. The parcel itself looks like it was developed maybe with a farmhouse or some single-family residence, but the rest of the property could have even been used as a small farming site. And you can also see the variety of housing that is in the area. The site plan shows where the 72 units will go, and there'll be a total of 261 on the property. There's an elevation shown here. The only comment we got from the public was, can we up the value or up the look of the units, make them more quality? But other than that, we did not receive any information, and this is how the total site plan will ultimately look. Uniform parking and separating it from other development, and it will be a very nice site. Here is a picture of the property itself, definitely in need of new development at this location. The project and neighborhood meeting notices were mailed to adjacent property owners and other interested parties on February 18, 2021. The neighborhood meeting, which we held virtually, was on February 24, 2021, and the neighbor, or the hearing notices were advertised in the Glendale Star on February 11, 2021, mailed February 12, 2021, and the site posted February 16, 2021. You do have a full citizen participation report, which was developed by staff because it was our application. The findings of this application, the request is consistent with the policies and objectives of the general plan. Approval will encourage development within a portion of the community where our infrastructure already exists, and compatibility with adjacent facilities and residents appear to be there. Staff finds that this request, zoning twenty-one-zero-three, conforms to these standards and recommendations, and approval of this with the following stipulations. One, development in substantial conformance to the design review submittal, design review twenty-one-dash-three dated January eighteenth, twenty-twenty-one. By the way, that was when we actually found that there was a need to do this, rezoning of this property, and any revisions would be required as part of that review. Staff, approval of the site plan revisions in conformance to the building height and setbacks for the R-five zoning district, and which address all transportation concerns for stacking, turnaround at the entry at Sixty-seventh Avenue. We want to make sure that that is a safe departure from the property. And a lot tie would be required to tie both parcels together. That's the end of that presentation. And if you have any questions, I can certainly ask. And I think the owner is in the crowd, if in fact you want to hear from him.
Any questions from the council?
No questions from the council. Public hearing is now open on item thirty-five, ordinance zero-two-one-dash-two-four. I have no speaker cards on this item. If there's no one needing to speak or wishing to speak, we are not going to be voting on this. It's simply a public hearing. And if no one speaks, then we'll just move on to the next one, onto the ordinance. What's that? Now, we're gonna get a motion for an ordinance. Right now... Okay, so we don't have anybody needing to speak. Okay, public hearing is now closed. Can I get a motion on item thirty-five, ordinance number zero-two-one-dash-two-four?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I move we adopt ordinance oh-two-one-dash-two-four and waive reading beyond the title.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Turner, second from Councilmember Clark to approve recommended action. Is there any discussion on the motion? We will do a roll call vote, starting with Councilmember Eldama. How do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and motion does carry. Moving on to item thirty-six. Before we go much further, I have, I can't make out this name. It looks like, I don't know what it looks like. Benson? Is there anybody that filled out a card wanting to speak on item thirty-six? Okay, Kirsten, why don't you come get this, figure out who this person is? Okay, Ms. Rabine, can you go ahead and get us moving on item thirty-six?
Item thirty-six, resolution number R-twenty-one-dash-twenty-six. A resolution of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, amending the general plan map of the City of Glendale, Arizona, by approving general plan amendment GPA twenty-dash-zero-six for a property located at the northeast corner of Sixty-ninth Avenue and Paradise Lane. Ordinance number oh twenty-one-dash-twenty-five. An ordinance of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, rezoning property located at the northeast corner of Sixty-ninth Avenue and Paradise Lane from R-one-dash-four single residence to R-three multiple residence for a development plan entitled Paradise Enclave, amending the zoning map, providing for an effective date, and directing the city clerk to record a certified copy of the ordinance.
Mayor and members of council, this general plan amendment twenty-dash-zero-six and zoning case twenty-dash-fourteen, Paradise Enclave, Sixty-ninth Avenue and Paradise Lane. This is another infill parcel that has struggled for years to actually get something developed on it. And as we move through this process, they're requesting a general plan amendment from medium density, three-point, five units per acre, and a high-density, twelve to twenty units per acre. The request, zone change from R-one-fourteen to R-three. The site is four-point-seven acres, and John Froch and John Froch Urban Planning, on behalf of Brian Matlock, are here to, in interest and to speak this evening if you need them to. Again, here is a vicinity map of where City Hall is, and this is again in an area of the city that's been developed for a number of years. And as you go through this procedure of the applicant, or the presentation, you'll see some things that are of interest and why this should give an opportunity to develop. The general plan shows this is medium-density five. And if you look at the zoning map, as you see it here, this is the rear portion of an A-one parcel, or several parcels. And this property that is adjacent to this one, we tried to get to join into this application, if nothing else, to join in. They didn't want to, and you'll see from some of the aerial photograph, it's probably not as clear as could be, but there is a storage of boats all over the property that's one property away, and a lot of outdoor equipment. The property owner is not interested in moving that, or wants to move, so we moved on from that and tried to make this parcel work. This parcel's history shows an approved site plan plat that was there for a number of years before and had no success in actually developing it. This is the site plan that is being proposed, with seventy townhouse units, fifteen units to the acre, and thirty feet high. This has the support of the neighborhood, and particularly the group to the north. These are the types of units that are being proposed, and I'd have to say they're pretty attractive in terms of what we're seeing just at this stage without any design review applied to this project. Citizen involvement. Neighborhood meeting was on November thirtieth, twenty-twenty. Second neighborhood meeting was on Jan- January sixth, twenty-twenty-one. Public hearing notices were sent on the twenty-sixth of March, twenty-twenty-one. Glendale Star noticed March twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-one, and the site was posted on March twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-one. Again, we did not receive any comments, but through the applicant, they had indicated that the people to the north were very excited about seeing new development happening there. The findings, the P-8A proposal will result in a quality development product which is consistent with the goals and objectives of the general plan by development of infill parcels where infill infrastructure is available, contributing to the diversity and supply of housing in Glendale. With that, staff finds that the request conforms to the standards of the general plan and recommends approval to the following stipulations. Conformance to the Paradise Enclave Minor General Plan Amendment and R-three narrative revised submittal date on Jan-, on December twenty-third, twenty-twenty. Dedication of a right-of-way on Sixty-ninth Avenue to provide a total half-street of thirty-five feet, which shall be made before the building permits are issued for any development on the property. It's extremely important that this street be fully improved. And all half-street improvements on Sixty-ninth and Paradise Lane adjacent to the site must be completed prior to the development of the property. A right-of-way abandonment shall be processed for the interior streets, and the gated driveway shall be required to have a turnaround. This is a really important site to get something started here, and maybe the properties adjacent to the east ultimately will come in for development because it would really strengthen that neighborhood. All overhead utilities in this case are, they've agreed to communication and electric lines less than sixty-nine KV on all or adjacent to the site, shall be undergrounded as a part of the project. That's a large deal for a project of this size. Shall vacate the Paradise Enclave plat and obtain final plat approval of the one-lot subdivision prior to design review. That concludes my comments.
Thank you. Any questions from our council? Hearing none. Okay, public hearing is now open on item thirty-six, resolution number R-twenty-one-dash-twenty-six and ordinance number zero-two-one-dash-two-five. I do have one speaker card. Little confusion, it was supposed to have been a gold-colored card, but we're gonna go ahead and take it from Susan Angotti. Go ahead, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. My name is Susan Angotti, and I'm here in behalf of Somerset Patio Homes HOA. As a board member and a community neighborhood advocate, we are a thousand percent excited about the Paradise Enclave development. It has been a dirt field for a long time. But for some, it's been a landfill. It's been a campground and a mud bog. And quite frankly, the safety of that area is our issue. Thank you.
Thank you. I wish we had more people that would show up and speak good like this. Good. Thank you. I have no other speaker cards on this. Any, anyone else wishing to speak on this? Anyone? Okay, with that, public hearing is now closed. Can I get a motion on item thirty-six, resolution R-twenty-one-dash-twenty-six? Go ahead, sir.
I move that we approve resolution number R-twenty-one-dash-twenty-six.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Melner, second from Councilmember Eldama to approve the recommended action. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Councilmember Eldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote? Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
I'm gonna explain my vote. If this makes your neighborhood happy, we're very tickled that we're able to help make that happen for you, so, good job. Motion does carry unanimous. Thanks for coming down. Okay, can I get a motion on item thirty-six, ordinance zero-two-one-dash-two-five?
Mayor?
Go ahead, sir.
I move that we adopt and pass ordinance number oh-two-one-dash-twenty-five.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Melner, second from Councilmember Tomachoff to approve the recommended action. Is there any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Councilmember Eldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and motion carries unanimous also. Ms. Rabine, would you introduce item thirty-seven for us, please?
Ordinance number oh twenty-one-dash-twenty-six. An ordinance of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, rezoning seven-point-two acres located at five-three-three-zero West Union Hills Drive from A-one agricultural and SR-thirty suburban residential to PAD planned area development for a development plan entitled TerraPoint, amending the zoning map, providing for an effective date, and directing the city clerk to record a certified copy of the ordinance.
Any questions from the council? Can I get a motion on item thirty-seven, ordinance zero-two-one-two-six?
Yes, Mayor, I move we adopt...
Mayor?
I'm sorry.
There, there's a presentation on this one.
Oh, well, go ahead. I don't want to slow you down.
Or we can skip it.
We could skip it.
I'm trying to keep up tonight. You guys are very efficient. TerraPoint PAD zoning twenty-seventeen. The request from zoning SR-thirty suburban residential and A-one agricultural to PAD, again in this case, is a rare unique use of this property and one that I hardly support. Ben Graff of Corals and Brady are here on behalf of TerraPoint One LLC, and the property's seven-point-two acres. Again, the vicinity map shows a location up on Union Hills, and City Hall is in the red on the southern part. The actual address of this property is fifty-three-thirty West Union Hills Drive. The general plan shows this as low-density area, but it is anything but low-dense uses in the immediate area. The zoning map shows the A-one on two different sides, and on the north, the south is Deer Valley High School under R-one-six PRD, and then there's single-family development further to the west, under that zoning. Here is an aerial photograph of the property, and you can see that there's some open space available along Union Hills and adjacent to this property. This is a closer look of the adjacent development, and what you will see as we get into the development of this property is a new site plan that is going to incorporate the existing structure and ultimately allowed for aging-in-place type of multifamily on the surrounding property. Now, it ultimately could be used for multifamily, but multifamily, aging-in-place, all that works nicely together, and how they're tying the existing building together to the new structure long-term is an exciting approach that I think most people who are familiar with this kind of development. There's some elevations that you can take a look at, and are a variety of building heights and colors, and hopefully, as we go through the design review, become very attractive. This is the existing frontage along Union Hills. These are the streets that are adjoining Union Hills and the vacant property on Fifty-third. And you go over to the, that is the one on the bottom. The one on the top is Fifty-fourth, where there's a church next door. This is Union Hills, again looking at the property, and then Fifty-third is, the street as you go north is almost a country path. Here's Deer Valley High School, and across the street are the gaming areas that kids play on, the football field. All of those things are then across the street as a neighbor to this use. These are some of the single-family homes that are further to the south and to the west, and there's a church then directly west of this property. Again, here are some more pictures of Fifty-fourth Avenue, which is nicely landscaped today after the development happened there. And you can see Fifty-third is in need of some work, and I think some of the folks in the area like to keep it that way because it keeps the traffic down. Public involvement. The initial notice was mailed January sixth to the property owners within three-hundred-feet boundary and other interested parties. Online neighborhood meeting was on January twenty-first. Site posted on February eighth, and hearing advertised February eleventh, and the postcards were mailed on the twelfth of February. Findings, it's consistent with the city's general plan, provides a highly-needed community service, promotes infill development where infrastructure already available and compatible with adjacent facilities and resi... The staff is recommending approval of this application subject to stipulations. Development in substantial conformance to the PAD narrative dated December seventh, twenty-twenty, narrative to be amended to clarify any future, oops, any future multifamily uses on this property, and that there would be a public hearing. Because if in fact you go to any of the commercial uses you might find in this type of development for haircuts, or getting your nails done, or whatever it is that some of the elderly would not want to leave the property, we have agreed with the applicant, I believe, that there should be some type of hearing following those tri-, those uses being initiated. Dedication of ten-foot right-of-way adjacent to APN-two-hundred-twenty-five-zero-zero-four to bring Union Hills to the full sixty-five-foot right-of-way. Dedication of additional right-of-way on Fifty-four so that the public sidewalk and public streetlights are encompassed within the right-of-way. Twenty-five-foot half-street right-of-way is required. As the right-of-way for Fifty-third Avenue is private, an ingress-egress easement should be along the eastern edge of the APN-two-hundred-twenty-five-zero-zero-four-F to encompass the existing pavement utilized by the property adjacent to this property and by the property to the north so that they can have emergency services on it and have a legal access point finally established. The dedication shall include an easement requirement for the placement of a sidewalk along the property at some future date. And that's the presentation on that application.
Mayor, members of the council, I would recommend opening a public hearing on this item.
Public hearing is required, so with that, councilmembers, any questions? Hearing none. Public hearing is now open on item thirty-seven, ordinance zero-two-one-dash-two-six.
Mayor, I just need to make one clarification of a statement that Mr. Rickert said if we could...
Okay, well, identify yourself, sir.
Absolutely. Ben Graff of Corals and Brady, representing the applicant. Completely agree with everything that was just stated. Just one clarification on stipulation number one. What we've agreed to is that if the multifamily use were to ever come into play, that would require a future hearing. But those types of service uses, barber shops, those types of things, those are permitted as of right within this application. And that's all I wanted to clarify. We really appreciate all of staff's time.
Thank you. Do we have any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
No speaker cards. No one else needing or wishing to speak on this? Public hearing is now closed. Make a motion on item thirty-seven, ordinance zero-two-one-dash-two-six.
Yes, Mayor. I move we adopt ordinance number oh-two-one-dash-two-six.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Tomachoff, second from Councilmember Eldama to approve the recommended action. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. We'll conduct a roll call vote. Councilmember Eldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Mayor, I'd like to explain my vote if I could.
Go ahead.
This is, I believe this project is a win-win for the community. I don't know if any of you remember, this was a boarded-up blight, basically, right on Union Hills for many, many years. And I got lots of phone calls about this property when I first got elected, asking, what is the city gonna do about this? And they've turned it into a beautiful facility that, you know, turned around a blight, literally, on one of the main thoroughfares in our city. They're acquiring more property and doing more improvements, and it's really a low-traffic use. It's not gonna disturb the neighborhood. And it's also meeting a need for the aging, aging population of our community. So, really, really pleased that they decided to fill up the rest of the land and continue the development there, and with that, I vote aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and motion carries unanimous. Ms. Rabine, would you introduce item thirty-eight, please?
Ordinance number oh-two-one-dash-twenty-seven.
Ordinance number oh-two-one-dash-twenty-seven, an ordinance of the council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Glendale, Arizona, by approving zoning tax amendment ZTA twenty-one-dash-zero-one for group homes, which amends Article Seven, Section seven point five-zero-two, general development standards group homes of the zoning ordinance, providing for severability, setting forth an effective date, and directing the city clerk to record a certified copy of the ordinance.
Mayor, members of the council here provide staff report this evening is Tabitha Perry, executive officer for special projects.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Good evening, Mayor and council members. ZTA twenty-one-dash-zero-one is a tax amendment request to Section seven point five-zero-two in the city zoning ordinance for group homes. The amendment is necessary due to a complaint the city received from HUD, which identified two areas of concerns with the zoning ordinance. The concerned areas are zoning and land use definition for group homes and failure to make reasonable accommodations for group homes. On December the eighth of two thousand and twenty, city council approved a tax amendment incorporating a disability accommodation process as required. Under further review and communication with HUD, additional modifications to the zoning ordinance is necessary. The current group home definition was established in nineteen ninety-three and allows for a dwelling shared by at least six, but no more than ten, handicapped or disabled persons. The proposed definition removes a maximum number of unrelated persons residing in a home or building, as well as allow for a more inclusive list of various services offered at a group home facility. The disability accommodation provides a provision for applicants who cannot meet the one thousand three hundred and twenty feet separation distance between group homes to appeal before the Board of Adjustment. Sorry about that. Slide six represents a minor change in the wordage. The proposed change to Section E of the disability accommodation intends to provide clarity that any form of requesting the disability accommodation shall be acknowledged by staff, meaning a request can be made in any form of communication, and staff would recognize either form to proceed with a disability accommodation request. The change will enact the process, but staff would still require a formal application to process the request. There are no oppositions to the proposed amendment, and planning commission recommended approval of ZTA twenty-one-dash-zero-one on March the eighteenth. Mayor and council, that concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from the council? Hearing none. Public hearing is now open on item thirty-eight, ordinance zero-two-one-dash-two-seven. Have you any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? Public hearing is now closed. Can I get a motion on item thirty-eight, ordinance zero-two-one-dash-two-seven?
Yes, Mayor. I move we pass and adopt ordinance number oh, zero-two-one-dash-twenty-seven, new series.
Second? I have motion from Councilmember Clark, second from the Vice Mayor to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Councilmember Oldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries unanimously. Ms. Fubin, would you introduce item three-nine, please?
Annexation AN dash two-two-two, Falcon Park, public hearing located to the north of one hundred fifty-second Avenue and Camelback Road intersection.
Mayor, members of the council here provide staff report on item thirty-nine and forty is interim planning administrator David Reichert.
Thank you. The Falcon Park annexation N twenty-two blank petition, basically, this is the council's opportunity to allow for public comment, and you gathered that information, and your date then would actually, and I'll state it again later, be for April twenty-seventh. Again, the locational map of this, and we've been through this a couple weeks ago, downtown is the star, yellow star, and then the star further to the west is at one fifty-second Avenue, south of Luke Air Force Base. Seventy-eight acres property north of Camelback Road and west of one fifty-second Avenue, south of Luke Air Force Base, there's approximately five hundred ninety-five thousand and eighty square feet of industrial and manufacturing proposed on this property. On the twenty-third workshop, you gave us direction to continue to move forward with this annexation process. Council approved the pre-annexation development agreement, P-A-P-D, P-A-D-A, to allow property owners to address infrastructure needs. As you can see from the fiscal impact and the ability for this property to produce income for the city, there's four hundred and forty thousand net benefit to the city on a yearly basis and four point eight million dollars of a one-time tax and permitting processing. Those fees are significant. This just gives you an idea of where Falcon Park is located in conjunction with all the other annexations that are in process at the moment. We are busy. This is the location of the noise contours from Luke Air Force Base that would indicate that the uses that they're going to be proposing here are the only ones that would probably be acceptable, other than commercial retail. The noise contours are sixty-five, seventy, and seventy-five over the property. The surrounding property aerial to the north is Luke Air Force Base, west is Maricopa County, RE forty-three development, city of Goodyear to the south, and Maricopa County PAD to the General plan and visions for the Glendale two thousand and forty. This area lies within the Lu, the Luke compatibility land use area, and again, it's, to give you an idea of whereabouts it is, it's almost off the runways. The existing and like zoning on the property existing is RE forty-three with the military compatibility permit. The reason we're suggesting is the PAD, and correctly caught by one of our council people at the time, there are no residential developments allowed within the existing zoning in the county, and the PAD today would not allow it either, when it comes through the process, which is not too far behind this. Annexation process and next steps, as required by state statutes, the blank petition requires a public hearing and is scheduled for this evening, April thirteenth, and once this is accomplished this evening, and if you take comments, or there are none, the property moves on to signatures that can be obtained on the petition. A city council public hearing is scheduled for the adoption of the annexation on April twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-one, and if the annexation is approved, the site will be added into the city's boundary within thirty days of that date. So, public hearing can be opened and...
Okay, so you're done?
I'm done.
Okay, very good. Any questions from the council? Okay, public hearing is now open on item thirty-nine, annexation AN dash two-two-two. You have any speaker cards? Very good, thank you. Anyone in this room wishing to speak on this item? Hearing none. Public hearing is now closed. There is no motion necessary. This was only a public hearing. Item forty, if you would, please?
The Cubes at Glendale, AN dash two-two-four, annexation, public hearing located on the southeast corner of Reams Road and Northern Avenue.
Excuse me. The Cubes at Glendale, annexation N twenty-two-four, blank petition, again, this is to allow for a public hearing to you to gather comments, but no vote is required. The vicinity map shows the relationship again to Luke Air Force Base. This is just north of an area that you already approved adjacent to the base, and you can also reflect on where downtown is in comparison. This is a seventy-five point six acre site, south of Northern, east of Reams, and north of the Luke Air Force Base. This project is one point two million square feet of industrial and manufacturing proposed. The council took action on September twenty-fourth, and council approval of the pre-annexation agreement was the benefit of that, to allow the property owner to address the infrastructure needs of the area. On March twenty-third, city council workshop, it was the consensus to move this forward to within the annexation process. On April thirteenth, again, this is the issue and making clear that this is open for a public hearing and that you're gathering comments, but no vote is required. The range of fiscal impacts again on this site, two hundred and fifty thousand annual review or annual benefit to the city as we reviewed it, and then the four point nine million one-time costs through permits and sales tax. Again, the map shows the activity, but it's more activity in this area than, more than what you've seen in recent past. The contours that this sits within are sixty-five, seventy, and seventy-five, obviously not usable for residential, but we are promoting retail as well as the wholesaling and warehousing. The surrounding property aerial shows you the Reams Road, PAD, which is a Reams Ranch, which is south of this particular site outlined in blue. There's an A-one golf course on the north side of Northern Avenue, Maricopa County vacant and residential property to the west, south again is Reams Ranch, PAD, and the Luke Air Force Base to the east. General plan, it fits within the Lu compatibility use area, and we believe that this seventy-five acres will be tied to the two hundred and sixty to the south that have already been approved. The existing zoning on this is RE forty-three, it would convert with the annexation zoning to RR forty-five rural residential, and then there is actually a zoning case coming forward to change it. As required by state statute, the blank petition requires a public hearing and is this evening, April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Property owner's signatures may then be obtained on the petition and brought back for the twenty-seventh hearing, which is listed at the top of this page. If annexation is approved, the site will be added to the city of Glendale limits within thirty days. And that finishes my comments, and you can open it for a public hearing.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Hearing none. Public hearing is now open on item forty, annexation AN dash two-two-four. We have any cards? Thank you. Anyone in this room wishing to speak on this item? Hearing none. Public hearing is now closed. Motion is not necessary, it's for a public hearing only. Okay, we're going to move on to ordinances. Can you introduce item number forty-one, ordinance number zero-two-one-dash-two-eight?
Ordinance number oh-two-one-dash-two-eight, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, one, authorizing the execution and delivery of a ground lease, a lease purchase agreement, a trust agreement, a continuing disclosure undertaking, and a certificate purchase agreement. Two, approving the sale, execution, and delivery of certificates of participation in a lease purchase agreement to provide the necessary financing therefore in one or more series. Three, delegating to an authorized officer of the city the limited authority to designate by series the final principal amount, maturities, interest rates, and other matters with respect to such certificates. And four, authorizing the taking of all other actions necessary to the consummation of the transactions contemplated by this ordinance, including the execution of certain documents and the distribution of a preliminary official statement and an official statement.
Mayor, members of the council here to provide staff report this evening is Assistant City Manager Vicki Rios.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Mayor, members of the council, this is a request for council to adopt an ordinance which will allow the named city staff to execute the steps necessary to issue up to two hundred and sixty million dollars in new debt through an instrument called certificates of participation to refinance a portion of the city's outstanding PSPRS unfunded pension liability. Once this transaction, contract, once this transaction, excuse me, is completed, about ninety percent of the debt to PSPRS, which carries an interest rate of seven point three percent, will be replaced by this new financing at a rate expected to be around three percent. The actual interest rate will be determined by the market when the certificates are sold, but as you know, rates are currently at historic lows. Staff in conjunction with our financial advisor from RBC Capital Markets have estimated the savings generated by this transaction will be over one hundred million dollars over the course of the next seventeen years. I do have Mr. Kurt Freund from RBC Capital Markets and Mr. Bill DeHaan here from Greenberg Trauerig, who are also available and will answer any questions council may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the council?
Mayor.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Ms. Rios, so, this action tonight, if the council approves it, is that the end of this process as far as the council's concerned, or will there be other steps to be taken?
Mayor, members of the council, this is the last formal action that council needs to take on this item. There are a lot more steps that need to be completed, those will be done by the staff in conjunction with Mr. DeHaan and Mr. Freund, and then, once the transaction is completed and we know the final numbers, we'll report those numbers back to council.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Rios, so, under separate cover, I received, and I trust the rest of the council did as well, a list of city-owned properties that are being offered, I guess, by staff for certificates of participation. Is that list fixed at this point if we adopt this tonight, or where does that stand?
Mayor, members of the council, I think I'll defer that question to either Mr. DeHaan
Mayor, there we go. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Kurt Freund with RBC Capital Markets, nice to see you all tonight as always. It's not locked in at this point, but I think an important concept to understand relative to this financing is, the city's going to go out and borrow a bunch of money, two hundred and fifty, two hundred and sixty million dollars is what we're estimating at this point. Similar to when you go out and borrow money, let's say, on a personal level, and you have your house as collateral, you're looking for something to be collateral. Normally, when you do that on a home equity line, you'd look at the value of your home, and you would borrow a percentage of the value of the home, right? Fifty percent, thirty percent, et cetera. In this case, we're flipping it around, so, we're going to go out and borrow two hundred and fifty million dollars of debt from investors, and we're going to put up collateral in the form of city facilities that are going to be less than two hundred and fifty million dollars by a lot, so they're going to be a value roughly half of the two hundred and fifty million. And so, for the council's benefit, because this can get confusing, I think, at times, the concept is you're really taking a breadbasket as much as you can, frankly, of your facilities, putting them up as collateral because you know they're going to be a lower value than the amount you're borrowing. And so, the list, I think, that the staff developed that was reviewed by legal counsel as well as myself, was a list of facilities that don't have a lien on them and weren't financed by some other debt instrument, and that's kind of how we came up with the list. And so, that's a bunch of stuff, but not anywhere near the amount that you're borrowing. So, while the list is not locked in right now, what we're trying to do is get a bigger dollar amount, not a lesser dollar amount, if that helps.
Mayor, thank you. And thank you, sir. The last time, this was before the council in a workshop, it was described as a high-level overview kind of conversation about this, and I know that I and other, I believe, other council members had, had wanted to know which properties we might offer up, and also, we spoke about having a robust public relations campaign or information campaign with our constituents, and then it comes back before us, ready to go. That disappoints me. Are there other properties the city owns that fit that description of otherwise unencumbered and not part of the enterprise funds that aren't on the list, or do, are we putting everything there?
Mayor, members of the council, all I, you know, the way to answer that question is, it took a lot of doing to get to the dollar value that we needed without, with those properties. So, once the other properties that Mr. Freund alluded to from the enterprise funds and that were financed with, say, excise tax debt were eliminated, we were a bit hard-pressed to... were financed with, say, excise tax debt were eliminated, we were a bit hard-pressed to get enough value, and so, yes, we basically need all of those properties in order to get to the dollar amount that we wanted, and there were not really any others that fit the criteria that we could have added.
Mayor, Ms. Rios, thank you. I do feel like this is a prudent measure to take, given the security of the mechanism and also the amount of savings that we would be able to realize for our residents. It's huge. It's far more than significant. It is huge, and it's important. I'm just, I just want to say I'm disappointed that we didn't receive more information. As a council, I know I had asked for it and didn't get it, and it just, I'm very concerned that our residents understand in a pace that they can process what we're doing and why we're doing it, and I worry about that. Public trust is paramount, and I don't want to do, I'm reluctant to do things that undermine that, and I hope the public will understand that if I do vote yes on this, it's because it's the right thing to do, even if I don't necessarily agree that the process was as good as it could be. Thank you.
Thank you, mayor. So I have a question. Basically, the, you know, if it's adopted by council, the ordinance is adopted, it's signed, but is there a cap or, because this is basically like saying, yeah, I'm going to go ahead and I'm going to do a home equity loan, and then, I guess, you know, send me a letter in a couple of months and let me know what rate I got. So is there, what is the sweet spot, and then what are the parameters? How do you determine, you know, I mean, obviously, the lower the interest rates, the better, but just say something crazy happens in the market, how crazy does it have to get before we decide this isn't the right time?
Mayor, members of the council, maybe I'll try to answer that. So the resolution has a max rate of 5%, which is fine. My answer would be, if you're anywhere near that, I wouldn't recommend going forward. And so the process is, from here, the council gives its approval, if you in fact do. We'll put together the transaction, which is, the legal documents are in draft form. They're pretty well good to go, as presented to the council tonight with the clerk. We go meet with rating agencies. We get a rating on the debt that's going to be issued. At the same time, we monitor what's going on with interest rates. Now, Ms. Rios was conservative as a finance or deputy city manager should be. She mentioned a rate of 3%. If we were doing it today, it'd probably be more like 215, so a lower rate, and your savings would be higher. Whether it's me or Ms. Rios, you know, you kind of try to hedge your bets a little bit. I think if the interest rate got up to, let's say, double, I'd probably be raising my hand for the council and the staff and saying, eh, maybe not a great time to go forward. Again, just so you're all focused on this, because I know you all care about it, and I think it's a good opportunity, there's two factors in play. One is the interest rate you borrow at, and the second is the interest rate you earn on the monies that are invested with PSPRS. The first one you control. We don't go forward unless the interest rate is low. It provides a great opportunity right now because interest rates are so low. I don't expect they're going to go up much in the next month and a half, right? Two months at this point. If they do, we stop. I mean, that's your control. I don't control that, but I would recommend to you, like I said, in an open meeting, that if interest rates are double where they are right now, I don't think it makes as good a sense to go forward, and, you know, I'd want to make sure you are all comfortable. The second, then, is what you earn on the money, and that you won't know except over time, you know, over the 17-year period, as we talked about in the work-study session. I think that the likelihood of where rates come out is in your favor because you just want to be higher than the borrowing rate. If your borrowing rate is 215, 2.15%, I suspect your earnings will be higher than that over the 17-year period, but that's the second piece that we look at. Does that answer the question?
Yeah, essentially, mayor, if I could continue. So basically, the ordinance has a 5% cap, but if it got to, I mean, 5% seems like, we hope, I would imagine, as you said, we would put the brakes on way before we got, we wouldn't execute at 5%. Just so, I just wanted to make sure I understood that there's some, you know, I think, right when the pandemic started, we were going to refinance bonds, and it was brought back to us and said, we're not going to do it because the rates aren't, no longer, if the market kind of went crazy, that rates aren't favorable to do that. So I just wanted to make sure, I mean, you, as you said, this was the last, this was the last thing that came to council. I just wanted to make sure that if things change, it will come back to us, and we'll be made aware that the rates aren't favorable, we're going to delay until that situation changes.
Mayor, members of the council, I'm glad you mentioned that because that's what I was going to refer to. We did do that. We had a water refinancing, and I believe maybe a GO refinancing, that we, in consultation, again, with Kurt and his staff, looked at and said, well, this doesn't make sense to go forward now. So even though you're taking the action and we can go forward, if something changes that dramatically to where it doesn't, no longer makes financial sense, we'll either put it on hold or not do it, one or the other. The other thing I wanted to mention is, you mentioned a cap of 5%. It also is capped at 260 million dollars. So there are two things in there. We're not going to issue more than that amount of debt or that interest rate, but we do expect, and Mr. Freund is right, I'm very conservative, so you guys know this, you know, we use very conservative estimates. We would rather under, you know, underestimate and overperform, and that's what we always shoot to do, so.
Mayor, I have a few more if I could continue. And Vicki, that's one of the many things I love about you. I think conservative is, especially when it's other people's money, is extremely important that we're super conservative in our projections and how we manage, you know, all of our funds. One other question, will this, does this have potential to increase our bond rating because now we don't have the unfunded liability? So I don't know, you know, as this, when the transaction's complete and then the rating agencies take a look at us and they're, we don't have 290 million dollars in an unfunded liability, will that help our credit rating, and that could save us even more money down the road?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's a great question. The short answer is no. We'll spin it, and maybe on the margins, spin in a good way. Here's how you look at it. The rating agencies look at pension liabilities as a debt. So in the most simple terms, you're going to take a pension debt and replace it with another debt. You get rid of the pension debt, you create a new debt. The debts are the same. Now, from your standpoint, budgetarily, you're going to save a bunch of money. That is a positive, you know, no question about that, but the budgetary savings are estimated based on what your interest earnings are. And so rating agencies generally, relative to pension deals, if you borrow at a higher interest rate, they view it as credit negative. If you borrow at a lower interest rate, they view it as credit neutral or nominally positive, but not enough to get you a higher rating. But we'll spin that, we'll work on it, but honest answer is probably not.
I understand. I didn't know whether, basically, this is taking unsecured credit essentially and turning it into 90% secured credit, sort of.
Sort of.
Okay. And then one more thing, mayor, if I could continue. We talked about it at the workshop, and this is a question from Ms. Rios, but there is a policy for the set-aside portion of that, and I just wanted to make, have the conversation, we've already had it, but have the conversation in public, that there is more council work to do as far as the set-aside policy, and we're going, how we're going to manage that and how we're going to set that up, and that'll be, once the transaction's complete, then we do that?
Yes, mayor, members of the council. Again, we've worked with Mr. Freund. He's done, you know, and seen other deals like this throughout the country with his firm and here in Arizona, and so we estimate that the set-aside will be approximately 20 million dollars, and, but we'll work through that with the rating agencies when we go to do the ratings, so we can get some feedback from them on that number and see how comfortable they are with that number and as the transaction goes forward. And then, once we've established what it is, we will bring it back as part of the council's pension funding policies. So every year, this council is required to adopt a pension funding policy, and so we'll place the language about the set-aside or the reserve into the pension funding policy that council will then subsequently adopt.
Thank you. That's it for me, mayor.
Okay. We have any speaker cards?
No, mayor.
Very good. Can I get a motion on ordinance number 021-28, item number 41?
Mayor.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve item number 41, ordinance number 021-28.
Motion, Councilmember Oldama, second, Councilmember Tomachoff, to per the recommended action. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Councilmember Oldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Mayor, I'd like to explain my vote. You know, this, to me, seems like a very clear thing. Anybody that's ever financed their home, refinanced it to get a better rate, or to pay off an old credit card that had a higher rate to get a better rate, makes a lot of sense. After the workshop that we had a few weeks ago, I went through and wrote a memo to my constituents in my newsletter to explain it all, and I got a lot of, some good feedback. I didn't get anything negative, so I think this is a really good thing to do. And with that, I will die.
Good. Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair of both sides, the motion carries unanimous. Would you introduce item 42, 021-29?
Ordinance number 021-29, an ordinance of the council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing the execution of a release of drainage easement and associated release of claims by Camelback Ranch Spring Training LLC for Lot 4 of Camelback Ranch in Phoenix, Arizona, and directing the city clerk to record a certified copy of the ordinance.
Mayor, members of the council, here to provide staff report this evening is Jamie Chapin, Principal Engineer.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Good evening, mayor and council members. In 1990, a drainage easement was recorded on Lot 4 of the Glendale Spring Training Complex, and Lot 4 is located between Ballpark Boulevard and the New River Wash. The reason for the easement was that the plan was for a regional retention basin to be constructed that would benefit all the properties in that area. Well, since that time, you know, the area has developed, and many of the upstream properties have provided onsite retention. Additionally, there have been many regional facilities constructed, such as the Bethany Home Outfall Channel, which intercept and convey drainage to the New River, and these are all done upstream of Lot 4. So for this reason, at this point in time, there really is no need for the basin, and subsequently, no need for this easement. So it should be noted that Lot 4 is owned by the City of Phoenix, and the City of Phoenix is in the process of selling the lot to Camelback Spring Training LLC for the purpose of development. Camelback Spring Training LLC has agreed to execute a release of claims related to this easement release. So staff is recommending release of the drainage easement as well as execution of the release, which will allow this area to be developed and support the Camelback Ranch Spring Training facility. Thank you.
Speaker cards?
No, mayor.
Thank you. Can I get a motion on ordinance number 021-29, item 42?
Yes, mayor. I move we pass and adopt ordinance number 021-29, new series.
Motion, Councilmember Clark, second, Councilmember Hewitt, to per the recommended action. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Councilmember Oldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair of both sides, the motion carries. Moving on to new business. Ms. Rabeen, would you introduce item 43?
Authorization to enter into Amendment Number 1 to agreement between City of Glendale, Arizona, and Motorola Solutions, Inc., for P1 CAD and RMS Command Central GL, Maintenance Command Central Aware Subscription, and Vigilant LPR Cameras Motorola Solutions Agreement Number AZP19P104A.
Mayor, members of the council, here to provide staff report this evening is Rick St. John, Deputy City Manager.
Mayor, members of the council, this is a request for council to authorize city manager to enter into Amendment Number 1 of a contract that we entered into with Motorola Solutions, Inc., back in 2019, for several software and hardware systems in the police department. This is your security camera and security systems contract or contract amendment, and this will allow us to begin installation of security cameras and the related systems in 23 different site locations throughout the city. Several of those site locations will be ready for an immediate installment, such as the skate parks. I know there's been some interest from our constituents about camera systems at our skate parks. We'll be able to do that here fairly quickly. And then some other camera systems will be installed as construction projects continue to move forward throughout the city. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions from our council? Hearing none. Do we have any speaker cards?
No, mayor.
Thank you. Is there a motion on item 43?
Yes, mayor, I move we enter into the agreement, Amendment Number 1, between the City of Glendale and Motorola Solutions, Inc.
Second.
Motion, Councilmember Tomachoff, second, Councilmember Clark, to per the recommended action. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Councilmember Oldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair of both sides, the motion carries. Ms. Rabeen, can you introduce item 44?
Resolution number R21-27, a resolution of the council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the use of a development agreement template to facilitate entering into development agreements with developers of industrial projects in the West Glendale service area for street in-lu fees and street infrastructure.
Mayor, members of the council, here to provide staff report this evening is Mr. Trevor Eversol, Director of Transportation.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Thank you, mayor and council. The item before you is in response to the significant amount of development that is occurring in West Glendale, specifically in the Loop 303 area. The level of activity we're experiencing was not forecasted. In fact, in 2018, when we revised our Development Impact Fee, or DIF, study, it was recommended to identify the West Area Streets DIF with an asterisk, which was intended to be a negotiable amount based on traffic analysis to spur growth. We didn't imagine how quickly growth would occur. We are currently in the process of updating our DIF study with our third-party consultant to respond to future growth in this area. However, in order to continue to maintain the momentum of growth and not slow development in progress, this agreement before you provides a consistent streets in-lu fee that allows those currently in development to continue moving forward with their project while also ensuring that the city receives funding for future roadways. The agreement locks in an equitable rate for each development and provides for an expeditious process for all stakeholders. The dollar amount is based on the streets DIF fee currently used in East Glendale. It was adopted by council in 2019. It's accepted and uncontested by the development community, and it provides the same level of infrastructure improvement for West Glendale as it does for East Glendale. The developers in West Glendale are still required to build their, or also build their half-street improvements, such as curb, gutter, sidewalks, and streetlights. If the developer chooses to build more than their required half-street improvement, they may qualify for a proportionate street in-lu fee credit. For example, if the developer builds their required half-street improvement and builds the center lane along their frontage as well, they would qualify for a proportionate credit. Staff believe this streets in-lu fee agreement will greatly assist our progress in growing the West Glendale area while we work diligently to update the DIF structure. That concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
Any questions? Do we have any speaker cards?
No, mayor.
Okay, can I get a motion, Resolution R21-27, item 44?
I move we adopt Resolution R21-27. Wave reading beyond the title.
Second.
Councilmember Turner, second, Councilmember Clark, to per the recommended action. Is there any discussion on the motion? Roll call vote. Councilmember Oldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair of both sides, the motion carries. Request for a future workshop and executive session.
Yes, Mayor. I move that we hold a special budget workshop on Tuesday, April 20, 2021, at 9:00 a.m. in the Civic Center, 5750 West Glendale Drive, Glen Drive. I further move that we hold the next regularly scheduled city council workshop on Tuesday, April 27, 2021, at 12:30 p.m. in the Civic Center, 5750 West Glen Drive, to be followed by an executive session pursuant to ARS 38-431-03.
Second.
Motion, Vice Mayor, second, Councilmember Clark, to approve. Any questions or concerns? Hearing none. All in favor, vote aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Periodize, have it, do have it. The motion carries. Also, comments and suggestions? We'll make that opportunity to the council. Councilmember Oldama.
None at this time, Mayor.
Wonderful. Thank you. Councilmember Clark?
None at this time, Mayor.
Councilmember Melner?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Councilmember Tomachoff?
Nothing tonight.
Councilmember Turner?
Not tonight, Mayor.
Vice Mayor?
Nothing, Mayor.
Well, that leaves me a whole bunch of time to talk. I have nothing either. Citizens' comments. Mr. Dibler, you're the only one that has a speaker card. If you want to work your way up, I'll go ahead and read this as you're coming up. Next on the agenda is the citizens' comments, the opportunity for citizens to bring information business before the council that's not on our agenda. The council can only act on matters that are on the printed agenda, but may refer the matter to the city manager for follow-up. So, you're there at the podium, you're good to speak, you've got three minutes, sir.
Hello, hi, I am James Dibler. I live in Phoenix, Arizona. The city of Glendale has a homeless problem, containing in downtown and South Glendale. Many homeless individuals are known to sleep at bus stops and public parks. Some of them are war veterans and have a hard time looking for a new job or going to college. Due to that pandemic, many homeless individuals have been exposed to COVID-19. The state agency needs to do a better job at providing the homeless with more resources, including opportunities for work and to win a apartment. The city of Glendale needs to be brought back to stand up for veteran events at Glendale Community College or Arizona State University West Campus. Granted, attendees maintain six feet social distance. The city of Glendale will partner with Phoenix to provide a job fair and more resources for war veterans. COVID-19 vaccination event should also be held for war veterans interested in getting a Pfizer or Moderna vaccine. Finally, I propose that Bethany Home Road bus stop get extended from Eighth Avenue to West Gate Entertainment District at 91st Avenue and Glendale Avenue. This extension is necessary. It will benefit workers, sports fans, and all the citizens who may travel without taking that Glendale Avenue bus. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, James. There may be no further business before the council tonight. I'd like to thank everyone for attending tonight's meeting. There's no objection. We're adjourned. Thank you.